Three is now open. First thing on the agenda, Whippa Willow Estates. Good, step right up. Yeah, why don't you stand over there and state your name for the record and...
My name's Richard A. Conas. I work for DeAngelo Incorporated, the new owners of Whippa Willow Estates.
Yep.
Or Potridge and Cottrell, the 20 lots. I was here before you about a year and a half ago when I worked for the previous owner and taught you, and I asked you to waive the roof recharge system, and you did so, and you asked me if I wanted to waive the whole subdivision. At the time, I didn't have the need to, and now we're moving forward with the subdivision, and the soils are poor, and they don't percolate, so I'm asking if we can have the 20 lots waived.
What we've discussed, I think, since then was if you have an engineer just put together a letter stating the soil types, because Chris, you were, you had mentioned that the state had changed what soil types you want, you don't need to have...
Basically, when they were typed, de-soils infiltration wasn't required when that was done, and those are, I mean, I've spent days and days and days over the years for 100 different customers digging on that property before they were sewer, and it was just, it was hard to cement.
So all you have to do is put together a letter, but from an engineer?
Right.
And have him state the reasons why that the roof drains, you're looking to have the, the plan was already approved, so they would have to ask for minor modification to the existing subdivision plans.
No, like, he'd say, based on my testing, the soil maps might call them sea soils, which is absolutely wrong, but, so he'd say, based on field testing, I feel the de-soils, and at the time, no infiltration would have been required, so that's for modification.
Now, we're there, you can, you know, set up a meeting for the next, for the next scheduled planning board meeting, which is the 20th.
Would you like the, the letter in advance of that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you, you can drop it off for Tamara, to Maureen, to the planning office, and that way there, we can put it on the schedule.
Excellent.
All right?
Sounds fair.
Good, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mastria, request for abbreviated site plan.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and where you are, where you are looking to...
Yep. My name is Rick Mastria. My business is at, this particular one is 1255 New State Highway in Rainham. I have two cottages here.
What was that address again? I'm sorry, 1...
1255 New State Highway. This is where the Saturn building is. 144 is to the, this is at the top. This is the back piece that's in yellow, and this is similar to the, actually even a smaller one than the one that I asked for before. This is a 34 by 22-foot freestanding steel building. In the past, we've used a lot of these storage containers for excessive parts and all kinds of things, and quite honestly, besides that they aesthetically look horrible, can't really run any electricity to them, and they, they leak a lot because you're buying them from another vendor. So, we like to use this building for a little overflow storage. A lot of times, we have outside vendors, like we had somebody today that came in that does refurbishing of like aluminum wheels on cars. Obviously, with the weather being the way that it is right now, that's a non-issue, but in the winter, this is a great place to have a vendor come in, put in alarm systems, that kind of stuff, because we always have to give them a productive stall when we do something like that. It would have no facilities other than just electricity going to it, similar to the building that you approved for me on Brookside Circle.
Just to plug my, when we change, it used to be 600... Under 600, 600 square feet or less, you didn't need to even be here.
I think it was 1,200.
And now it's gone up. I think it was 1,200, which you're clearly under, so I don't even think you need abbreviated site plan, and I think you just need a letter saying you don't need site plan.
Okay.
Right?
So what's the size?
I mean, it's under 1,200 square feet.
34 by 22.
You don't even have to be here. It was nice seeing you and everything, but it's, it's under, it's about 700 square feet, just, just more than half of the 1,200.
Well, that's the way I did it before, and that one was just under 1,200, so I just want to make sure it went through the process the right way.
Now, this, did you have this...
As long as it doesn't require extra parking, that's, that'll be okay.
Yeah, did you have this, this drawing done to allow for this building?
No, that's presently there. The block top is presently there. I just, it's a Rick Mastria drawing.
So now, what is in this yellow block?
Three parking spaces.
So you're gonna lose, you're losing three parking spaces. Now, what were those designated? Now, this says storage area, snow storage.
Yeah, that's, the snow storage is, is on the land side. We would push that, we would plow that off into the, to the...
So if you put the building there, are you gonna be able to still access...
Yeah, as you can see to the right there, on the, where the Nissan store is, there's snow storage over there, so we generally push to the middle and then push it over the edge that way.
Eric, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I was thinking, if he gave us a letter that said he was putting up the building, it was X number of square feet, and that he was losing three parking spaces, and we gave him a letter saying that he was less than the 1,200, so he didn't need to come into the site plan, he could build it as of right, and that we find that the loss of the three parking spaces is, is okay, and that he still has sufficient parking, he'd be able to go get a building permit?
Make that motion.
Seconded. Seconded for discussion. Marilyn, who?
The only thing I would think about is circulation, and has it, does it have any effect upon when cars are brought in and taken off trailers? Those are the only other things I could think of that would affect...
Taken off trailers, how do you mean?
You know, if you're moved wherever they were required to park to unload new cars.
Okay, yeah, actually...
Does it affect that? Does it affect, you know?
Well, this, this, this plan was, you know, the original plan, and as you can see, it does say truck route there, but honestly, we don't have any drop offs there. They're all dropped off over on the Nissan side for both, for both stores.
It'd probably be a good idea to put that into...
Yeah, put that in the letter, too.
Operate that into the letter. And I would like to label this building. I think we should put a, some label to it. Storage.
I was thinking the Andrade building.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I think it should get, I think it should get labeled, only because I, I would not want to see this become a body shop or...
Oh, yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I propose building for storage, and we keep this as better.
Put that in the letter, too, for storage only.
Now, we're there, we agree with the building.
I explained that it's storage, but it's also, like I said, let's say that we have a vendor that comes by that's gonna put an alarm system in the car. It happens a lot, we sub out a lot of things. They take a productive stall, so we would put them in there for an hour to put, to do a particular job. That's why we would have electricity in there.
I think more importantly, that's, that's a subcontractor of yours. I think more importantly, not to have public access, not to have public use.
Okay, gotcha.
You start getting public, people going in there to view whatever.
Gotcha.
So I think if you can add that into the letter, your employees are gonna have to access it, even if it's a shed.
Yep.
So that's fine, but not to have public access for the public use.
Okay.
Yeah, only employees and subcontractors will have access. The public will not be allowed in the building.
So if you, if you do that, then motion was made, if you can prepare that letter, and then you can swap letters.
Do you want someone to look at it, like Burke or something?
If that's, I think...
How fast do you need it?
How fast do you need it?
I can do it next week.
Okay. So why don't you, why don't you do the letter, and then we'll, we can prepare one, and then we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Any other questions? So that motion was made, seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Rainham Flea Markets, abbreviated site plan, public hearing or notice?
Chris?
Let me just read this notice.
Yeah, we're gonna...
It's a public meeting notice. In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48 and Article 13 of Rainham's zoning bylaws, the Rainham Planning Board before the public hearing on Thursday, September 6, 2012, at 6:15 PM at Rainham Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street, Rainham, Mass., on application for abbreviated site plan approval submitted by Craig Dutra, agent on behalf of Rainham Flea Market, to allow a carport structure in the middle of the flea market's parking lot to hold 760 solar panels to produce electric, I think, electricity for the building. Locusts on Judson Street, assesses map 14, lot 164, Rainham. Copy of the application plan are available for viewing at the town clerk's office and planning board office, 558 South Main Street, during usual scheduled business hours. Any person wishing to be heard or interested in this submittal should appear at the time and place designated. Rainham Planning Board, Daniel J. Andrade, Chairman.
Thank you. Henry, could you maybe just shut that door? This came in front of us at our last meeting, and it was decided that they could come in as abbreviated site plan, seeing that it was basically just a roof structure with poles holding it up, and it wasn't gonna interfere with the existing building, the existing traffic flow, or any of that. At the last meeting, we did say, or we did ask to get information about digging a access or digging the electrical trench to the building to make sure that that was clearly stated, that it was gonna be time of that to be completed, started completed, that it wasn't gonna interfere with the weekend, weekend traffic for the flea market people. So, I think that was about all we discussed at the last meeting.
And in the back of the plan, you'll see...
Please.
I'm sorry.
So, you may state your name for the record.
Craig Dutra, Monroe Distributing.
Okay.
Lyndon Campbell, from Monroe Distributing.
All right. And you can get right up to the podium and explain what you are proposing here and...
Well, as you requested, a trenching detail, you'll find on the second to last page, is proposed to trench on, on Monday and be completed and backfilled by Tuesday.
So, for anybody that's watching, this is the Rainham Flea Market, piece of property in the back parking area. That is where this structure is gonna be placed. It's 423 feet long, 33 feet wide, and it's basically gonna be a big, large carport that's gonna hold solar panels.
Correct.
We have an 18-inch wide, 18 wide, 24 inches to top of PVC conduit, C trench detail T1.
Next page.
Nice, easy to read letter.
I know. I almost can't read it, it's so big.
Jesus.
Well, that's pretty basic. I mean, I don't know, you know, that is what we asked, what we asked to have on the plan. For this to come in as an abbreviated site plan, Dennis is gonna, they're gonna be pulling out a billing permit for, I assume, the footings, just for the cars. And...
Probably for the structure itself, huh?
Well, yeah, they'll get a billing, they'll get a billing permit for the whole thing, but I'm, I'm just looking at inspection-wise, if part of this, if we can have the planning board be notified, or the planning board office be notified, when this is being erected, so one of us can take a ride, take a ride by there and just check. I would like to make sure that the day that the digging is gonna be done, that you notify the planning board office also, because the wiring inspector, I just want to make sure that everybody, it is gonna be done, it's gonna be done, like you say in the plans...
Right.
...within a day. So, I would just make sure that, you know, any scheduling that you do with the town, that you, be very careful in making sure all the schedules are done and checked, and it's done correctly, only because, you know, Friday's a half a day.
There'll be two processes. There'll be an electrical trench, and there'll be also a footing trench, which won't be at the same time.
Right.
But, two different aspects.
Now, once the electrical trench is dug, I assume the building inspector would already be out there to inspect the footing. You're gonna do the footings first?
Um, yes, we're gonna do the footings first. That'll determine, it's approximately 100-foot trench from the, the carport to the building, and that's gonna be definitely dug in one day, inspected, piped, backfilled by the next day.
I would, I would say, all we would, if, if we were notified, the, when the digging of the trench was gonna be done...
Okay.
We'd, you know, the building inspector's gonna take care of the footing, that's not our job. Our job is more making sure that the parking, parking lot area is, you know, safe for the public to access.
Safe, exactly, absolutely.
Russ, any questions? Burke? Yes, Henry?
There appear to be a lot, people out there, are they here on this case, and do they want to be heard?
Soon as I'm done with the board, I will ask, and...
I have no problem.
No problem. Chris?
I'm good.
Is there anybody here who has questions about solar system? Yes, state your name for the record.
Yeah, Ronald Tremblay, and I'm in the butter, I live right in the back of the flea market.
Mm-hmm.
I was just wondering, actually, what this thing's gonna look like, seeing we're gonna be looking right at it.
Do you have a, if you would like, you could come up, I'll show you where it's gonna be facing.
It's gonna look kinda like a carport over the parking lot for the slanted roof.
This is, this is the front of the flea market, this is the back parking lot?
Yeah, and this is the, the 65-foot road he dug straight to my house.
Does that give you access to the flea market on a Sunday?
No. It wasn't.
It could.
Okay, so this is going right by.
Yeah.
And how high is it gonna be?
Can you state your name for the record also?
I'm Deborah Tremblay.
Deborah Tremblay?
Yes.
This is kind of a 3D rendering, that's a much better.
Oh, okay.
So it's gonna be tilted that way?
Yes.
Back towards the...
Back towards the...
Where is your property?
99 Rachel Drive, right down this 65-foot road.
Okay, that's, it comes out onto Warren Street. No, it doesn't come out, Rachel Drive.
Uh, backs up to our property.
Backs up to our property. No, but Rachel Drive comes out.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yep. So that's where it's going, right in the back. It's not gonna interfere with any of the parking, there are still gonna be parking underneath the canopy.
Okay.
And the traffic flow is gonna stay the same. Nothing on the parking lot is gonna be affected.
How high is it gonna be?
It's actually tilted, I think, away from you.
Yep.
The height of the, yes...
I would have bothered to these folks.
He's in the butter as well.
Can you change your name?
Bill Kennedy.
Bill Kennedy.
81 Rachel Drive.
The height, excuse me, the height of the total structure is...
17 feet?
17.
In the, the butter's view would be, well, their area would be 17 feet.
So you've got 12 feet on one side, and, yeah...
17 on the other.
And how tall is the building that's there now?
The actual flea market?
Roughly.
I don't... 40 feet. 40 feet.
Yeah. So, from your point of view, you're probably gonna block a little bit of the flea market look and see nice panels or whatever.
Okay. Continue. Very good. Yes.
Representing the butter, at 500 South Street West.
Yes.
I'd just like to get a location of this, and how, is it affecting any...
This is, this is a kind of a 3D, that's the front of the flea market building.
Excuse me, sir, can we have your name again?
Ed Bishop.
Address?
896 Plunge Street.
This is the front of the flea market building. This is the rear, and this is, would be the solar panels. It's like a carport, instead of shingles or a roof, it's got solar panels on it.
This is a big overview picture. This is the panels there, this is the, this is the flea market right here, this is going on the back of the parking lot.
So none of the parking will be...
Effective.
Effective? And how do they propose to buttress this, if a car takes it out? Is there any safety sign in mind?
It's got a, well, it's I-beams, it's a, what was it, 10 by 50 I-beams?
3 feet, 3-foot beers.
Yeah, we can, are you all set with the plans? Because you can ask the questions, you can ask me questions, and I can...
It's 12 by 50, so that's a 12-inch I-beam, 50 pounds per foot, so that's a pretty beefy beam. And that's beefier than any structure holding up a wall.
Is that it?
I was just wanting to know if it would affect the parking, because, you know, that is an issue down there, a big, big issue. 200 spaces have been overlooked there. Well, yeah, it would.
This, what's in front of us tonight is not gonna affect the parking.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that has any questions? No? Members of the board? Chris?
Make a motion, will you approve, is there a site plan for, could this be the title? AA Precision Machine Company?
No, that's the manufacturer of the, of the steel.
Okay, motion to approve a site plan for the Rainham Flea Market for their solar post assembly, associated solar panels and carport, proposing the rear of the building.
Date on it?
This plan is dated 9/6/11.
Any engineer or anything?
Just AA Precision Machine Company.
Yeah, well, in our second motion...
Seconded for discussion, as part of the approval, I would like to just add in there about having the planning office notified on the, prior to the digging of the trench for the electrical service to go into the building. I'll second the amendment. Did you get that?
Is that a condition?
Is there any...
It's part of the motion.
Part of the motion?
Yeah. Any other thing? Anything else?
We vote on that motion.
Okay, that motion, all in favor? Aye. And?
Chris, when you said the name of the plant, we have these plans by AA Precision Machine Company, did you also get the ones by Monroe Distributing at the back?
No.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we add in our, in the name of the plans, the Rainham Flea Market top few with panels, two sheets by Monroe Distributing Clean Energy and Electrical Solutions dated 4/29.
Is that the solar panel makers?
What page is that on there?
They're the last two.
Pages, it's actually two plans.
Yeah, one of them is more for the structural and the solar panels, and one's for the electric, which is Monroe.
So that was...
So the motion now includes the change of title, so we need to vote on that amendment, then.
Right. So was that seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, first motion was...
Now the motion has been amended twice, so now we vote on the motion as amended.
And that was seconded by Henry? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good.
So they're on all conditions?
Yeah.
Other than...
Yeah, I figured we'd put that right into the motion, and...
Do you have...
Yes, Marilyn.
I have a conversation, my assumption is that electric plans are done for a licensed electrical engineer.
Correct.
So, I'm noticing we've been getting involved with a solar bylaw for round-mounted, large-scale portable tape, and the size of those begin at 250 kilowatts...
Correct.
...in terms of round-mounted, and this room indicated it was 200 kilowatts, correct?
177, to be exact.
Right. The only thing I'm, I ask some questions about, when we looked at several, a couple of samples of round-mounted, when I looked at them, there seems to be a lot of attention paid to keeping the electrical pieces away from the public. In other words, there's a lot of, large chain link fences and warnings and things, so I just, my only concern is, in this case, if it's not reviewed by, you know, an electrical engineer on the town's behalf, I just was not sure that we wouldn't want to have that extra protection for the public. The other issue is the structure, they, they were too heavy to place on the building, so there is a structure where people are gonna be milling about underneath these, this structure. Do you wanna have...
Well, I think the structure part is gonna go to the building department. I think Dennis...
That's fine. It's just, all I'm thinking about is safety.
Oh, no, no, I understand, but I think...
We're in a whole different, you know...
Yeah, and we're looking at, we're looking at the traffic flow, we're looking at what it's gonna do to the existing parking, and I think the structure is fully gonna be, Dennis is gonna, is gonna want certified engineered plans, they're gonna have to have a certified engineered stamp, even though the town is not gonna be looking at, if we sent, if we had this reviewed by Judith Netch, he wouldn't even be looking at the footings. That's not something that he would be looking at. That's a structural engineer, that's something with the building department.
I'm just seeing the way that the...
And again, that's, but again, that is all, that's all structural, and that all has to go through Dennis. I think the only, the only thing would be, like the gentleman asked, if somebody hit the pole, what's gonna happen, you know, to the structure, and it's a pretty heavy-duty, pretty heavy-duty structure to hold up those, those units. It's not up to us to determine the weight and the square footage and all that, so I'm confident Dennis will make sure that, you know, they...
It's all bringing up, because it seemed like it was danger, danger, when you went anywhere near these solar, on the ground solar, it was, seemed to be a real effort.
And I wonder if they're, if it's a danger, danger, or the reason why they fence them in is to keep people away from them, so they don't damage them.
They should have fenced in those ones in Carver on the highway.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying? I almost, I almost think it's, it's for, you know...
You fence in front of them, not behind them.
You can, you might look at it as a safety issue, but I think it's more for protecting the, the cost and the expense of them putting them up, so kids aren't going in there and making a mess.
And this is actually safer than it's higher up.
Well, you actually have a point, but this is 17 feet in the air, so rules out the...
So...
...so-called safety factor on that point. And these columns are like 40 times stronger than a typical light pole in a parking lot that you can hit.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, like I said, I'm sure Dennis is gonna have, make sure structural engineers...
We're all stamped, we're all stamped.
I'm sure the electrical inspector's gonna be out there anyway.
Okay, that's it? You guys are all set?
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night?
Thank you, Chris.
Is Metro West coming in?
No.
That's a...
And we have a letter here, Metro West, let's see, Brian Dunn, trying to get drainage to work, so runoff to Route 44 and Church Street will need to, so will need to continue for two weeks. So they're still working on the plans for the corner of Church Street and Route 44 for the Metro West Volkswagen deal. So we make a motion that we extend, or continue the public hearing until September 20th. Let's put it on for the same time, we can do it at 6:20.
We should suggest a higher professional management to assign the drainage.
September 20th at 6:20. And Maureen, for, this is all we have, which is the email.
Yes.
We can just sign this as part of the...
Yes.
So, that is continued until, as I said, 6:20 on September 20th.
Would that also be on the same, same one?
Hmm, oh, write it, write it on there for the, yeah, you can do that. You can do that.
And with time to act is not an issue?
November thirtieth.
All right, so you can sign that and pass that down. So, we have executive session coming up, but before we do that, we seem to have been moving right along this evening, which is a good thing. Town planner update, you have nothing on there, is there anything that you would like to add?
Well, Burke and I met with the solar bylaw committee and made some progress on that front. I gave a tour to Marie Smith and Carol Sullivan, who wanted to see a solar, a large-scale solar project, so we went out to eighty make pieces, we looked at their twenty-five-plus acre solar...
And who's that?
Eighty make piece.
Where's that?
It's in Wareham. And it was done by the same company that had, we had talked to previously. So we went to like, took a look, take a look at that, and it's quite impressive, it's, and I would suggest, if we do, it'll be brought before the planning board, you know, I'd be glad to make the same arrangements to the planning board to take a look at it, 'cause a lot of things were brought to, you know, it, it, when it's in front of you and it's that larger scale, you're picturing that in Europe, the field next to your house, I mean, so I think we need to be moving forward, conscious of the fact that in industrial setting, it's fine, but it was very, very big.
So... When you were out there for that visit, did you have a chance to speak to anybody there, or did you just go, oh, yeah?
Yeah, Chris made, it's fine.
Did you talk about, anything about the solar, or did you just whisper something?
He answered the questions that he could answer, and, but the other questions had been answered already by the engineers who showed up at our solar bylaw committee, which was, they were very helpful, there was, they provided some good information going forward with the bylaw.
Good. One you went and looked at, it's in an area that's primarily cranberry bogs and not a lot of people living around there.
That's right.
After looking at that, what kind of buffer do you think there should be?
I do think that there should be enough of a buffer that it's screened from view in a residential area, not, maybe not quite so much in a, in a business or industrial area, but clearly, it's not something you'd wanna be looking at from your bedroom window. The other thing that appeared to us is that if, even if you provide a buffer, there was one location that has been proposed, that some of the homes sit relatively high from the lot that's being considered, that's gonna be coming good for the board. And you will be able to see it, even with a buffer, you'd be able to see, in fact, Marie, in Marie's view, she knew the, she knew the location. So you, you're probably gonna end up with those kinds of comments from residential, they not likely wanna look at this.
Where, where's this one?
I don't know, there's, I think there was a proposal on Pleasant, I don't even know, it was, do you know?
Oh, is that Les Wyatt's old land?
I think so.
It's 'cause that's what that Brian Dunn comment the other day, yeah, Les. When he passed away, he had two nieces, and he ended up willing, giving it, signing it over to Wayne Arms a few months before he died. Not signing over, but just willing.
He was there, Mr. Arms was there at this meeting. So, all I'm saying is that it just, it seems to be, you know, in terms of any other zoning, except for farm and forest too, we wanna talk about that, but it's, it's, you can't really deny it, I mean, the state makes it clear, you can't unreasonably regulate unless it affects public safety or welfare, public safety or their welfare, well, you can say it's their welfare, it affects residents' housing.
He could do some fairly mature plantings there that were dense though, you know, we were talking about Les's field, Les Wyatt's field? Pleasant Street, the log cabin is...
Oh, way down there, okay.
When Les passed, Wayne got all the land except the new log cabin, which Les was nice enough to deed to Dickie Maderas for a dollar, and he sold the house before he moved in. And then, which he was rather upset about, and then the other one down the right, Lestrone's house is not part of it. So it's all the field behind it, which is kind of a nice vista from the houses across the street and Pleasant Street.
Randy was at this meeting, he suggested a fifty-foot buffer, now the, the engineers thought that was extreme.
Well, I think a hundred.
I, I think a buffer there wouldn't, a planted buffer would be what would matter, not the width of it.
Again, you know, we're in the process of defining what that buffer should be, so I, you know, any suggestions, but it should be screened so that you cannot see it, I would think.
But we, we have some screening for zoning districts, twenty-five foot, fifty foot, and that's kind of joke, you can see right through.
I mean, whip, what's its, Marioni thing there, the fifty-five and over?
There we go.
Yeah, that is a buffer, but it's not, they maintain a buffer of trees that lose their leaves.
Well, and that's another thing, though, when they, when they were putting in the water treatment plant next to my house, and they wanted to put up white pines, well, white pine, you get these little needles, and you see, I throw them, they're...
It depends, though, you can, like, Norvill's apartments filled in nice on King Philip, they take a while, sometimes.
It's, it's, I think we said it before, it's gonna be a tricky, it's gonna be, no matter how much you put into it to try to protect everybody or every situation, because just listen, and if it is, you know, talking about that, you know, like across the street, looking down, it's gonna be impossible to...
Yeah, there's nothing you...
So how do you, you know, how does that fall into the screening, not, by not seeing it, I mean, that's kind of...
The other issue is that if it's, if we, we have areas of zoning that are, that only require site plan approval, they want, they want to call it a review, you can't deny it, you can put conditions on it, but Burke suggested that in the residential areas, we include a requirement to have a special permit. I asked Serbit, if you have that, can you actually deny, and they said, yes, you can't. So, and you can make the case that it affects the welfare of the people that are surrounded, so I think there's that option within the residential areas to allow that discretion, and, and the whole location is gonna be determined by its access to the, the electrical connection to the mountain anyway.
You have to allow it in every zone?
You have to allow it if it's under site plan review, you can only place conditions on it.
Well, but I mean, can't you say this solar panels are allowed in just a business zone, something like that?
You can't unreasonably regulate, you could be challenged...
But I mean, if you said, okay, it's industrial zone, there's plenty of open, big open industrial property.
Well, there isn't, this town will be one.
Now, if we, if, if it doesn't, if it is for all districts, are we gonna have something in there? Good, I, the one that just came in tonight, that's a private, is it gonna be something separate?
Well, this is only for ground-mounted, large-scale, and it has to be two hundred and fifty kilowatts or larger, which is about an acre in size, and then even with the buffer, you're adding more, it's probably like five to seven acres, we thought, for the smallest one. The largest, they said, is regulated by the fact that they can't do it larger than six megawatts, that is about twenty-five to thirty acres, plus the buffer.
It's about five acres per...
Megawatt.
Right.
So if you're worried about residential, I think you could...
I think it's reasonable to say you can't do it in residential, and look at it like a commercial use.
Well, if you wanna do that, you think about how much commercial property we have.
There's a bunch of, just make it non-residential, I mean, all, South Street East, there's all kinds of massive fields out there that are business-owned in the back. There's one thirty-eight, there's all of Pine Street.
Close access to the, the connection, I think that's the other thing.
There's plenty of hundreds of acres left.
Provided it has the close access to connection to deliver the, the electricity.
That's their problem.
Well, go ahead.
But then they can say that's unreasonably regulated.
But as far as the tax base of the town goes? This, something, you could've had a warehouse or a, you know, major tech company come in, and instead, you're gonna have solar panels, the taxes are gonna be much, much less.
And that's their land, and that's the choice to use.
Okay.
I mean, I think you could regulate it out of residential if you wanted, it's, it's, no, aesthetically, it looks like a huge warehouse.
Well, I'm sure that you, members of that board...
Yeah, we're gonna be coming back again.
Looking at all of the, all the alternatives and all the options.
See if you could find a town that regulated out of residential.
Dartmouth tried that, and then they changed their mind, I think, because they pointed it only in business, but I think that they realized that it wasn't, it wasn't a, because of its location, of their, I think it was industrial, commercial, they wanted to keep it in, for the same reason, but it wasn't connectable to...
Plus, I think that night that we had that meeting here, he read, I think Marie had asked the gentleman from the solar company about that, and he read a section in the state bylaw, I think that stated that it couldn't be...
Those only ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. So the term is unreasonably regulate, we can regulate, but it can't be determined to be...
So, so if it's determined, or the bylaw that you're preparing says that it's gonna be a special permit, we can put conditions on it.
You can even deny it.
And you can deny it, so it's still gonna come in front of you, so if it's...
I think a special permit really gives us a lot of, you know...
And then, and then we're not shutting it off for everything, but yet, it's, it's up for law.
And residential may be appropriate in some cases.
It may be land that was, it's not applicable for residents, you know, but it would serve a purpose for...
So I think, you know, Chris's concerns are taken care of, but, you know, that's why I'm around my... I really do. 'Cause we look at each one individually.
No, I think, I, I think you're right.
Thank you.
All right, Burke, minutes, did you have a chance to...
I did. I make a motion, waive the reading and approve the minutes of August sixteen, two thousand and twelve.
Wait a second there. I think one thing should be added there, on the back page, second page, paragraph two, when we talked about common ownership, I thought Burke had put in there that it should, has to remain in common ownership, and I think that's an important thing, that should be in the minutes. Because if it doesn't remain in common ownership, we're talking about the car dealerships and the offloading of cars on a contiguous piece of property, and if that piece of property was sold, there would be no offloading on one of, was this Metro or Matria?
Metro.
Metro's, it wouldn't be available on the lot we were talking about. So Burke had put in there, you know, that it has to remain in common ownership, we could just make that one change, or one addition, I guess.
Can we have a second for discussion?
We do.
Okay.
Now, let's make discussion.
I will second Mr. Ellis's motion to amend the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now?
Motion to accept the minutes as amended.
As amended from Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're looking at me scary like I'm, I'm waiting for something to get, okay, that was...
Just a quick one, Dan.
Thank you, Henry.
So, with the Basset Noles was subject to me looking at the plan.
Basset Noles.
You didn't have, you didn't come up with a number of lots, you just put after discussion?
Oh, from the last, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I saw some...
We had some issues about...
Lots that he used where, where, when it was designed, with a detention basis.
Right, and one thing that we, we discussed was, if, you know, they came in front of us, they showed us how many lots that they said that they had, and we, you know, we said, well, you know, you can look at the plan, but also, if it's determined, once we get into that cluster, when it's reviewed by Judith Nitsch's office, if they feel that it doesn't meet the number of lots, then we're gonna revisit it.
Yeah. We had some miscommunication, the guy called up and I said, we'll bring the plans by my office, so we brought him by the planning board and sat there for a week or so, and not gonna chase the guy, and to get work, and he called and said, have you reviewed it yet, and I said, what are you, bringing the plans by?
Yeah, so we did leave that...
You did sort of approve what they had shown as the number of lots, subject to their confirmation either by Chris or by Nitsch.
Exactly.
I did the minutes, and I apologize, I really didn't do as good a job.
No, it was, it's, it's clear, it's clear that that's the case, I just wanted to make sure, okay, okay, I'll get in.
Is that why, this is the first time you amended the minutes?
I'll, I'll get in and look at it then, do I have to write all that, or are you gonna rewrite?
I can add it if you want, whatever you want.
Whatever Henry just said, you're adding, right?
You want to add it, didn't you? The common ownership?
Yeah.
So scrap these.
No, I mean literally now, we want to pen, pen, so we know what we're doing.
You can sign it, it's muted.
Okay. All right, Marilyn, did a great job in the, filling in, filling in for Maureen while she was absent that evening.
I guess we won't be letting her take any more time.
Scratch you up.
We are, we are going into executive session for discussion, I guess, litigation discussions, mitigation discussions, yeah, potential litigation for Berry Hill, fifty-five and older development that is off of Pleasant Street Pine. Yeah, Pleasant Pine. Let's see.
I just notified the video camera to disconnect.
Yes, and before you do that, you should, you should request...